And calling to order the Board of Commissioners and our joint meeting with the City of Malin with Commissioner Hensley and DeGroot.
Just want to inform everyone that this is being recorded by the city and the county, just so we don't forget stuff. And I ask everyone to turn their cellphones down, we're off, so we can pay attention. Roll call. Councillor Tony Vaneas.
Here.
Councillor Krista Moore.
Here.
Councillor Ryan Bartholomew.
Here.
Councillor Abby Fennels.
Here.
Mayor John Hutto. And you want to introduce yourselves while we're here?
Yep, Commissioner Dave Hensley.
And Commissioner Dirk DeGroot.
And we're missing one, it's supposed to be three. No, I was talking about them.
Yeah. Commissioner Mateen is unavailable.
We're missing two. Can we stand for the pledge?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we ask that you guide us again tonight and make the right decisions for the City of Malin. Amen.
Amen.
Public comment. Public comment?
I don't know, I just wanted to come and introduce myself, my name is Randy Goodrich. I'm one of the tenants out at the airport here in Malin. Been out there about ten years, I grew up in Malin. I know a lot of familiar faces in here and everything. And finally got an opportunity to come and sit in on one of these, I'm usually working, but had the night off and decided to come in and see what it was all about. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike Cheeseman also attended out at the airport and been out there not quite as long as Randy, but been involved in aviation and Malin provides a pretty unique opportunity for flying around and stuff. So, you know, interested in the City of Malin and what goes on at the airport.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more public comment?
Um, yes, I have a brief statement I'd like to read if I could. My name is Stephen Smith, as some of you may know. I've been here in Malin about five years, this is my brother Bracken who's visiting, he's, we're both pilots. I, um... You may know that Kathy Carmichael's my partner, she was born and raised here in Malin. One of the important reasons that we decided to settle here is the airport. And we built a hangar out at the airport and we're, we're very happy with our life here. I've heard it said that the city thinks that it's stuck maintaining an airport for a bunch of rich guys and I wanted to try and talk about that briefly because some of us have money out there, but most people are pretty ordinary citizens. And the airplanes that we fly are rather inexpensive. The four of us, there are four people out there that fly airplanes that were built at, in people's garages. I mean, they're literally home-built airplanes. And they don't cost any more than an ordinary car, for instance, so they're really, we're not, we're not... You know, when you see a pilot, you're usually looking at someone that's made a lifestyle choice. It's not that they have money flowing out of all their pockets, some do, but most don't. The opposite is pretty typical. You know, we're pretty happy out there as a group and we try not to make demands on the city. We, we bring in our own gravel to maintain our own taxiways. We do, we bring in our own tractors to mow the airport. There are things that we can't do. And so, you know, we do have to ask the city to pitch in once in a while. One of the things that we believe is that the city doesn't really know what's out there and that most of the council people here have never been to the airport or haven't bothered to come look at it. We'd like to invite you to come out and someday when we're there, which is, if it's a sunny day and it's a Sunday, you may find these two there, for instance. And any of us can come out and we open up our hangars and show you the airplanes and you can see how big or how little they are and get a better understanding of why we like it there and what we do at the airport. And so we'd be happy to have one or all of you come out at once, if you'd like. It's an open invitation. When you come and visit, you may be surprised to see how small and simple the airplanes are. Most of them weigh around 650 pounds, but they can still carry two people. So they don't weigh as much as some ATVs that people are out driving these days and yet... What that means is they're kind of fragile and that, you know, some of them are, can land off airport in rough places and some have to have a runway or else they come apart if they came down in the ground in some farmer's field. As, as some of you may know, there have been cracks showing up in the runway out there. And this evening I went out with a tape measure and measured them and most of them aren't really that bad. They're about three inches. There are a few that are as wide as six inches. For some airplanes, a crack six inches wide is just kind of a nuisance, like a pothole that you'd have on a car if you were driving down the road. For other airplanes, it will tear the tire off the airplane. Now, those of us who are out there know, you know, that what the risk is and we can usually handle it okay. But there are airplanes I'm familiar with that would actually be destroyed if they landed with cracks that size. And so, I think that's something the city should keep in mind. If someone coming through chooses to land there, they could have the nose gear fold off of their airplane. It's not impossible, there are a number of smaller light aircraft and they, they literally have air, have tires that are five inches in diameter. If they drop into a six-inch hole that's, you know, four inches deep, it could rip the tire off the plane. So it could happen. Those of us who are out there have significant money tied up out there. You know, purchased a hangar for tens of thousands of dollars, have tools out there, have, you know, so it's part of our lifestyle. I, I just want you to know that, you know, we're out there and it's not some nebulous thing. It's actually an airport that we use and we would like it to continue to operate. Recently I heard through the grapevine that the credit card terminal for the fuel system needs an upgrade and that the quote you've received is quite high. I'm, I own a software company and we sell and support credit card equipment. Now, it won't work in an airport environment, but I do know something about it. If the city would like my help to evaluate options that you've been quoted or something on the equipment that you need to do to upgrade, if that's the true story, I'd be glad to offer my time to review those things. And maybe that's not even true, that's just what I've heard, that there's maybe over $10,000 needed to fix something out there. That seems a little high to me.
It does, but that's what we were quoted.
Okay, well... How many?
$13,900.
Yeah, if you'd like, Robbie, I'd be glad to, you know, look at it at least.
But then we have to come up with a new software and everything. That's why we got the software, we already own it, but that's just the machine.
Right.
It's $13,900, so if you go with the new machine, I mean, we'd need to see everything.
Yeah.
The breakdown of the permits to install it.
Yeah.
Changing everything, you gotta do the whole follow-up.
Yeah, I believe you.
So...
But if there's some way to avoid some of that, I'd be glad to see that done. But if it can't be done, I mean, there, that's the way it goes, that's the way... You know, unfortunately, the credit card, we all know that we now have chips in our cards and so forth. This stuff just doesn't quit because the scammers and hackers don't quit. And so they keep upgrading the technology and, you know, there's, anyway, I've had to go through this. I've had to make my customers buy all the equipment and that doesn't make them happy for certainly. So, finally, I guess I'd like to see the relationship between pilots and the city become better. Maybe improved communication somehow. I've heard, you know, that some of the pilots out here, out there like to come in and make a nuisance of themselves, to put it politely. There, I don't think that we three think that way and that's, we're here to say that to you. That we're, we want to be good citizens, we want to cooperate. And if there's some way we can help the city, we would be glad to do that. And as I point out, we do mow the airport and we do take care of the gravel and some of the maintenance out there. So, that's all I had to say, any questions for me or any comments about what I've said?
I'd like to say something and would you like to address the asphalt?
Ah, sure.
Okay. Nobody at this table care if you're rich, poor, millionaires or whatever, you're all welcome at the airport in, in Malin.
Alright, thank you.
I don't care what you have.
Appreciate it, John.
And I've known that guy there since he was a little baby.
Yes, sir, you have. Okay, glad to hear that.
Uh, so one thing, so you said there was, most of them are kind of smaller cracks and then there was a couple of six-inch cracks.
I measured mostly three and some fours and a few sixes. The sixes are outliers and I didn't walk the entire runway erect better than half of it though. And I measured them all until I saw a pattern and then when I saw something bigger, I measured that. It tend to be for some odd reason on the right-hand side, they're, right out by the, at the edge of the pavement, there's some pretty ugly ones there. And I did see places where a second crack is starting to form, where a chunk is going to come loose and that would be kind of ugly too. On a, on a, on a takeoff roll, when the throttle, when the pilots push the throttle all the way forward, it's possible for a propeller to pull up small rocks into the propeller. And the propellers on even our little airplanes cost over $2,000 and it'll total it. If you, if you hit a big chunk of concrete, it gets sucked up out of one of those, it will... So that's mainly an issue at the start of the runway, by the time we're halfway down the runway, it's not really going to pick up anything anymore.
So, and that's part of, you know, extending the invitation out there. I'd like to, a few of you that were even interested at all is to come out and take a look at the situation. Because I understand when you're hearing about something, if it's really not your wheelhouse or on your, you know, brother, you really don't understand what we're talking about, you know? And we've made a really conscious effort, like I said, a lot of us out there do. I mean, I've been out there for ten years. I've mowed the grass hundreds of times, okay? Fielding the tractors, fielding the mowers, manpower, hauled in gravel, everything. You guys have never seen me in here ask for anything, right? And it's just something, you know, we didn't think about when we were doing our leases in their, you know, estates, on our leases, you know, Malin maintains the runway. So we never really thought that it would ever become an issue, you know, to have some maintenance done, you know? And like I said, we're only, you know, coming to you guys now and making it, you know, known to you guys that it is an issue. And it's an issue we can't evolve, if you guys are familiar, I had an ELT, which is an emergency locating transmitter that's designed to go off in a crash. Mine went off the other day landing on the runway, I hit a, hit a pothole and it went off and it's kind of a serious thing. It goes to a satellite, they dispatch search and rescue, phones are ringing, people are wondering where the crash is, right? Well, that was taxiing down the runway, you know? And, and things like that, you know, so there is planes that are more affected. Our concern is not necessarily with the people here, you know, in the room, but if some transient pilot was landing here, wasn't aware, you know, of the situation and, you know, they could get themselves in a little bit of trouble, which obviously gets people into lawsuits and liability and all kinds of things that none of us want to see happen, you know? The last thing we want is the FAA involved in any, anything, you know?
Yeah, so one thing I wanted to do, and I appreciate you going out there and looking at it, is to update the nodums to accurately reflect what's going on out there because I think right now it says cracks greater than...
It says like one to three on most of the things on the website. And yeah, there's, there's a few that you literally are this wide, which I run six-inch tires on my plane, so if I drop down in them, it'll actually be setting on gravel, you know, in there. That's a significant, you know, a crack isn't going to bother anybody, but a crack is going to bother.
Six inches is a problem. Well, for instance, a tailwheel, you know, there, there are planes that have big tires in the front and a little teeny one in the back and a lot of times those tires in the back aren't more than about six inches across. Is they're just meant to run down a smooth surface and if they drop in there, it'll rip the whole tailwheel off the plane. So, it's, this is something that, well, I understand it is being addressed, so I'm not here to beat up on anybody. I'm just saying that it's, it is, it's not an imaginary issue, it's a real issue for certain aircraft.
Yeah, and Robbie's got back from a trip to Portland, but we talked a little bit, but one thing that, you know, and we talked yesterday about the survey that came out and, and I want to, here in, before this weekend, I want to contact the folks and see what that timeline, so we can get an actual, no kidding, timeline of, of when we're looking at having these repairs done. Yeah, we've got the big packet there, I think it was, I mean, they, they measured all the cracks and how much it was going to cost per crack to fix. I think it was ended up being what, $137,000?
$137,000.
And then they would pay 90% of the cost.
That's a hell of a deal.
Yeah, so, because we're, we have not, we don't really have any commercial, you know, leasers, you know? It's, it's all private, so, you know, if you, like, Clameth, they have to pay a lot more percentage because they have commercial tenants. But because we're all kind of just, you know, private tenants, we only have to pay 10% of that, of that cost. But just, just to get something from them of, hey, you know, let's, let's get well here. I mean, when do we expect this to happen?
Have we actually qualified? So there, I'll tell you that the folks at the airport, the pilots out there, you can hear one story from one person, another story from another person, they're, it would be, it might cool down some of the tempers of some of the people out there that are known to be a little inflammatory if the messaging was, was clear.
Can they give everybody a copy of this, if everybody wants one?
I, I could read it if I had it, I mean, that's a lot of paper, but I...
About the same intel that I'm getting. But like, when I did call the one lady in here.
Yeah.
She did inform us, this is a engineering company that's doing it for...
Okay.
The state.
Yeah.
And then the state does the selection. So the state would probably be the ones that would, basically on a priority list type of deal.
Okay.
So if there's other airports that were, they decided they were going to pay...
First, then...
If they were going to pay, we'll take all the money and take all of them.
Yeah, okay. So we haven't actually applied then, is that the true statement?
It's basically in there, we're in the list.
We're in their hopper?
We're in their hopper.
Okay.
We're in the round. It could be 24 or 25, is what it said, 2024 or 2025.
Oh, that's ugly, yeah.
Yeah.
I think those cracks have opened up a good inch in the last three or three years, what do you guys think?
Oh yeah, the majority of the damage I think was done in the last year.
Yeah. So that's, uh...
Ryan, when were you out there measuring?
That was, that was, what, September, October or something?
Excuse me, Ryan and I went out there and measured them. They were all about three inches, what we saw.
Yeah, and that was, what, September, October was last year?
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
Most of them still are, like I said, most of them are still three, but there are some, there are some fours, fives and sixes.
It was a, you know, it was a wet winter, so, I mean, you know, that obviously... Yeah.
Yeah, we seen the majority, but like I said, this, this last year it really got significant, so...
Is anyone, is there a temporary solution that anyone's come up with? I mean, you just threw asphalt in there? Because asphalt's not that expensive, but...
Actually asphalt's pretty good.
Is it?
Well, we just did Third Street and that was 98,000, 99,000. It's only 650 feet.
Right, but we're really...
No, they, if, if you want to do that, you can.
Just fill the cracks.
But the problem is, is all that's coming out next year. So do you want to spend, do you want to spend $10,000 and it all come out over the winter?
Yeah, no, we don't do it.
Or do you want to go in and do them correctly?
Yeah, well, I'm just asking.
And saw cut them two feet wide and...
Not proposing anything, I'm asking a question as well, so, if there's, if it's not feasible, it's not feasible.
I think if we went and tried to found it in a crack, I believe it would come back out. Crack sealant works in a narrow crack.
Yeah.
But try to do asphalt in a wider crack.
Yeah.
When it, when it comes. It's coming out.
Yeah.
It's just like every winter around here.
Yeah.
These guys work with the county, they know how a pothole can work.
Timer two.
You pour some cold patch in there, cross your fingers and hope nobody drives down that road.
Cold makes them won't last.
Yeah.
What about mastic?
The traffic is...
What about mastic? That rubber?
We did that before we slowly sealed it.
Yeah, it's been done there.
It's laying in the bottom of the crack now, you can see it down there.
Two or four years, but the problem is, is the cracks are getting larger, like the guys are saying, so all the mastic's just flowing down in there, so you could do the mastic again, but then it's just going to drop back down there.
There's going to be a lot of mastic.
Yeah.
There's, they're going to eat up a truckload of that.
Copy.
Okay, well, you know, I'm luck, one of the lucky ones. My airplane has big tires on it, it's just kind of an annoyance, it's not really a safety issue. But for others, it, it will cause damage sooner or later.
Yeah, so we'll definitely, I mean, immediately we'll get the nodums to reflect the accurate size and, you know, we'll contact them and, you know, hey, maybe they might say, hey, you know what? You know, do your 10% investment and, so I don't know.
So a final comment would be on the fuel, if there's a way to get the credit card system fixed. Oddly enough, the three of us that came here don't use that fuel, I'll just be straight up with you. Our engines don't like the lead in the aviation fuel. It gums up the piston rings and it makes the oil, you have to change it twice as often. So, we got onto the card lock at Hatfield and buy fuel and drag it in here, which we're fine with. We aren't asking for anything about that. But again, for transient pilots and for the other pilots on the field that do need the fuel, I'm wondering if there, if we could do a study or something to look at why it isn't profitable for the city. It should be, it is for other cities. And I would think if the fuel's priced right, we can steal Newell's, Newell's fuel stops, you know, price at 10 cents a gallon, cheaper. Pilots, look at that stuff, they're, you're buying 60 gallons of fuel and you can save 10 cents a gallon, you can land here better than, you're not going to go to Clameth, it'll be a buck more or 50 cents more. So I'm just wondering if there's a way to make that work for the city so you actually make a profit. Because other cities do make profit off their fuel. And I, I'd like to see the city come closer to break even on the airport so it's not a drag on, on city finances, we don't really want it to be.
And, and the infrastructure is already there, I mean, you guys have it.
Yeah, and the money's spent, the machinery is real nice compared to... But I've landed at something like 400 airports in the United States so far and, and that fueling equipment is top drawer, basically, there's nothing wrong with it, other than maybe the credit that I'm aware of, let's put it that way. So I, I would like to see the city make an effort to turn a profit with fuel sales, if it's possible. I don't, I don't know what the issue is there, but other cities do it. Hardly I know that it's a matter of advertising.
Ah, I'm not sure what, I haven't looked, looked for a long time on the, on the price.
You know, pilots don't get to not buy fuel. If it goes up, they still buy it, they may cringe and, you know, they may fly less often, but they still buy it.
Yeah, but like you said, if it's one of the places, you're getting 60 gallons and somebody else in the nickel or dime cheaper, they go there, so...
Right.
If the city buys fuel, we're obligated to hold that price of whatever profit.
Of whatever profit.
We can't lose money. Or you as a taxpayer would be happy, because I can go buy fuel...
I don't propose that you sell it below your cost.
And sell it for half price. Because it's taxpayers' money, we can give the fuel away.
Well, quite honestly, it's not a unique problem, there, every airport faces this. A lot of them don't have a lot of sales, in other words, there aren't a lot of people coming in. And you're going to win some, you're going to lose some, we've all seen the price at the pump go up, it goes down, it's just for car gas and it fluctuates. And so if you're lucky to buy it cheap and you can sell it, you know, over a long period of time at a higher price, then you make out well. And then that can, you can catch that the wrong way and you're not going to make out as well. But you need to have a kitty fund that's dedicated to that to even it out. Because if you, if you don't have fuel, people will stop coming here and then, then you've lost your clientele, just like you would at a gas station if you said, oh, we don't have any fuel today. Pretty soon you're not going there anymore, so, I would never propose the city sell fuel at a loss. But you have to average it out over some period of time, is the way it would seem to me. Now, I'm not, I'm not sitting in the shoes of the guy who's having to buy the fuel, so I'll say that right out front. But other cities do it, other places do it. They, you do see places that get, get hosed, you know, where they buy fuel at a really high price and then they can't offload it. And it's, that's a problem, for sure. There's got to be, you know, you hope that doesn't happen to you, it can. And then you're stuck with fuel for quite a while, unless you're going to sell it at a loss. But on average, you should be able to come out okay, other places do, so...
So it's 684 at Kingsley.
Is what they're asking for, you know?
Yeah, Ashland, 740.
One thing I've noticed that not all of the sites that pilots go to shows the Malin fuel price. Sometimes it says nothing. So there actually are, there isn't just one place you can go to post fuel prices, you have to go two or three places. And I can help with that if that would make, improve the exposure so that more people know that we have fuel and what the current price is, might, might improve traffic a little bit.
We offered it to a fuel company and I think he did some, pardon, looking at it. Steve Sooty with his L. Sooty in Clameth.
Okay.
And, uh...
Has it, had let them take over the maintenance and everything or something?
Yeah, kind of a, you know, we'll lease it to you for a dollar a year if you want to run the fuel. Now, it hasn't been back, so...
He didn't think it was a deal, huh?
Apparently.
We offered stops the same thing.
Yeah.
And they haven't been back.
Hmm, okay.
So that, I mean, if a fuel company don't want to do it, I just don't understand it. Maybe that's why we're not making money.
Well, I think just the dollar, you know, dollar amount, small potatoes compared to them, you know, popping up a gas station, they have cars coming in and all that.
Yeah, yeah, it's just a distraction to them, probably.
That's what they need, is they need the volume to make up for when they have a loss.
Yeah.
Whereas, we only deal with 5,000 gallons in six months.
If we're lucky.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to make any profit.
Yeah.
Is that what they were doing before, is about $5,000 every six months roughly?
Yeah, I mean, like, the last, what was it, September, October? When, when everybody else went up like a dollar fifty and we stayed the same.
Fuel prices went up and we...
We sold like 3,000 gallons in two weeks.
But like Caesar, one, one thing pilots are, they're pretty thrifty. When I, when I was staying out there a lot and we were building a plane. I, I had ten pilots from Kingsley fly in on a Sunday and that's what it was. They were all like, oh yeah, you guys are, you know, a dollar cheaper than it is at Kingsley, you know? So they're out there, they're looking for a bargain if, if, if it's convenient, you know?
That was a good month, I mean, we made, we profited like 2,700 bucks a month.
And that's what we like to see. We, we don't want to see you guys give up a money-making thing, you know? We understand if it's not a money-making thing for you guys, but we'd rather see, you know, the City of Malin profiting from, you know?
So would we.
Because like I said, it would, it would be a nice offset and I, I guess the point of this is too, we're pretty good resources too, we have friends that manage airports and things like that, you know? So if, like I said, we can get to the point where we can have an open conversation, we'd be more than happy to make some phone calls for you, you know, get some advice, figure things like that out, you know?
Yeah.
Gold D top for divided tank.
Sure.
Like I said, it's one of the nicest pump setups, I mean, most of the time you go to these things, you know, their card locks are out in the sun, they're nasty, you know, they don't work, can't read the display. The reels are falling apart, the hoses are cracked, I mean, they're, this one is a really, really nice facility for, you know, and it's underutilized most of the time.
Well, Robbie and I, we can, we can sit down here Friday, Friday or something and look at the data we have on...
Thursday.
Thursday.
No idea.
Thursday, we'll sit down Thursday, we'll look at the data we have and, and have a better idea of, you know, where we're at overall, some framing out, like, yeah.
And I'll make that copy of this that we...
Yeah, that's what I, that's we want to make the copy, I'm glad to have it, yeah.
Brian, you and myself are on the airport committee, we need to get three pilots on there besides the ones that were appointed because that's the ones that were loud. And they're also the ones that want us to sell fuel for what we paid for it.
Sure.
To them, to them.
And, and just so you know, we, we understand who those people are and you're going to have that a little bit. I don't think any of us, you know, align with that way of thinking, like I said, you know, we'd rather be allies for you guys and, you know, resource. And that's why, you know, we've, we've done our own thing out there for so long, you know? Because at the end of the day, we don't want to inconvenience the City of Malin at all with anything that goes on out there.
We have to explain it to the taxpayers.
Sure, absolutely.
So what I'm getting at, there's three of you right there who make a good committee.
I volunteer.
And we can have a meeting next month and go over all this and we should be like every three months.
Yeah, great, sometime in, early July, you know, after the fourth.
Yeah.
Get together and then we'll be able to share data and see what we came up with and have a, a way forward and hopefully maybe then like get well data on, or we can get some... hopefully maybe then like get well data on where we can get some repairs done.
And, and we're working on right now for the Fourth of July and everything, we might possibly have a fly-in out there at Malin. So we're going to bring in some other pilots and like I said, give you guys an opportunity if you want to come out and take a look at what's going on.
Yeah, we'd love to have you come out and see what we do with your airport.
Yeah, yeah, I would encourage anybody that hasn't done it, drive, drive out there. Just drive out there and take a look.
I was out there the other night.
Just see.
We was out there about a month ago, late at night.
Man, I'm ready to see you fueling the helicopter out there.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the coyote, the coyote getter out there?
Yeah.
No, this is so, brand new helicopter.
For fuel and there wasn't any.
I don't know why they didn't get fuel before.
Sounds, sounds like jug time, huh?
That's what, we had to go buy a brand new jug.
Well, and, and.
And you know what, I was going to say, there's a great example. If any of you would have my cell phone number, here's my code to my hangar, there's jug setting right in there. You can take care of the problem, no problem and, you know, and that's what we want.
They just got enough to make it to Clamath. And we watched them to make sure they made it to Clamath. So Steve, you want to work on the card reader?
I'd be glad to look at the quote. I, I think, like he's printing off the pavement quote for me right now. And it can be now or it can be at our first meeting, when is that?
Yeah, so.
Whenever you guys decide.
Okay, well, I live right here in town, these boys have to drive out here, but they'll do it.
Yep, absolutely.
So.
Well, that's the only way it's going to get done if we all work together and.
Hundred percent.
Get good pilots that want to help.
That's why we're here.
Well, that's what we're here to let you know is that we're, we, we're looking for something positive, not for something negative.
July sixth, does that work? July sixth?
As far as I know, that's a good date for me.
All right.
What time?
Seven? Sure.
Okay.
Seven o'clock. All right, put it on the calendar.
Cool.
All right, I think we're out of here then.
I appreciate y'all coming in.
All right, thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you guys. See you in July.
Yeah, sounds good.
He wants us to get sworn in and go back to Colorado.
I'm listening to him. Before, we got a safe meeting.
Oh, safe meeting.
Your pilot check the nodums before you land the airport.
It still says we have fuel, one, I have two.
Yeah, the real one says no.
So you're not, I was just trying to understand that you're not able to fluctuate the gas or the fuel cost on.
Oh, no, we can, you know, we can fluctuate the cost. The only issue we're going to do is like, you know, like say, oil's a hundred bucks a barrel and we buy fuel for six fifty a gallon, right? And then the market, you know, drops out and it goes down to thirty dollars a barrel and we have gas we paid six fifty for, then now
that you can get Clamath for three bucks.
I mean, yes, that's an extreme example, but the volatility of, of the price. Now, if you have a gas station, you, you know, like you have the volume to make up for, you know, hey, we bought low and sold high. That makes up for when you buy high and sell low. But we just have, you know, the volume to make up for those swings.
You know, since the county commissioner was so nice to come down there, maybe he has something they can help us do out of the airport.
We're taking notes, you know, he was taking notes, I'm taking notes. It sounds, you're already working on grants with the state to do the asphalt repair, right? So, I mean, we're happy to write letters of support to let them know how dire the situation is, if, if that'll be helpful. But that's easy. Make phone calls. County?
Not yet.
We can make this a county report.
No, no, we don't.
This is truly New York State Airport.
Yes.
The, the state line is through the middle of the runway, so.
That is very, that's actually pretty cool. But no, no, we don't want that. But, yeah, I was making notes, you know, privatizing the fuel sales, but you write the volume. Who's going to do it for that little bit of volume? That's.
Big brother?
We don't, no.
Not him.
But if we can help with helping you get grants to get the, the runway repaired done, let us know how we can be helpful in doing that. That's, that's easy stuff.
Thank you. I think works.
Not a lot, but we do fast. Our third big project is complete. That is out to Cascade Potato, new asphalt, don't know if anybody noticed. And you have a seventy-nine foot static, we're up three feet from last month. We have a well bid in for the new well and it will be on next month's. Immediate night, we're going to put it out to bid. Well, number five at bid?
Five.
Should be five. So anyway, the engineer did get that done. I got a price for stump grinding over Kitty Park, the three big pine trees that we took down. I'd like to kind of get them ground down. We looked at where we were going to plant trees, but then I thought, you know, them stumps, kind of along the sidewalk, that's going to be, I'd be trying to plant a tree with a stump. I thought about digging them up, but they're so big.
Thought they were picnic tables.
Yeah.
For a kid, that would be bad choices.
So the bids for grinding stumps are seven hundred and fifty dollars. It's Bob Porter's, I think it's his son of a.
Son of a.
Yeah.
How many is it of?
Just three.
So that's not a bad.
Seven hundred and fifty dollars to remove all three stumps.
Yeah, he gave a really.
That was a good price.
Can I get his number?
Yeah. He, he bid for the park too and I was like.
I think he's got about fifteen stumps, that's why we got a two check ring.
We're like, yeah, that sounds great.
It's a two check ring, yeah. And then I got bids for the new grasshopper, twenty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven. We did not buy one last year, it was nineteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-two. So far this year, we probably got thirty-five, forty hours of repair work on the whole north. And did my parts come in? And that's becoming an issue too.
Mm-hmm.
Because we're waiting for parts.
So would this be on this year's, so would we, we'd be able to get this one on this year's budget or would this be after July first?
I'll order it, well, it's thirty days, so I guess it might fall into next year. I'd call them, well, we didn't write the check for the day that they.
At least I got the equipment, at least we got plenty of.
Oh, yeah.
You just have to date the check for, you know, and then you want to lose them.
It's just that one's a high enough bid that you guys need to approve that one. Otherwise, your end of town is going to get a high.
My side's cut already, so.
Their side's done, yeah.
So we have a motion to buy a new grasshopper.
Mayor, I make a motion to buy the grasshopper more for twenty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven.
I'll second.
You didn't wait till I've done. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
That's all I have. Any questions?
When's he going to be nice to airport people? When's he going to grind the stump?
Probably in the next few weeks.
Yeah, I think he's coming up for the fourth.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Yeah.
You're building?
Oh, yeah. We're, we're, we're being recorded here, so the, the pumping facility.
Still haven't dug a hole in it. There's a lot of other stuff happening. Try. Trust me, I'd rather be down there. Some days.
That it?
Yep.
Any questions? Police, you want to go first?
Well, I have nothing new.
So we're going to make him do it after we swear him in?
Yeah, we'll let him talk. Last month's been nothing new really, pretty quiet, besides us getting our new chief, so we'll let him talk for the most part. Our stuff out here has been same stuff, nothing new. Our all, we've been taking care of them still. Big thing there is probably all the juvenile complaints that I'm sure everybody's heard about, so it's being worked on, but with their age and stuff, we have to write their reports in and deal with it that way, so. It's a waiting game, but I know tomorrow they'll ask at that meeting also, so he's being taken care of. And then I'll let you, unless anybody asks questions.
Not a question, but just wanted to say thank you for you guys' help out the graduation.
Oh, yeah.
Directing traffic, that was, that was really good because another year's passed, it's
Yeah.
Almost every man for himself.
Yeah.
Officer Clary came in and took care of that for us and a couple of us stayed on like the night before and we had no issues over graduation weekend that, that we're aware of yet, so. Everything went pretty good and with him there, I think that helped out a lot.
Yeah, for sure.
County guy came out and helped, so. Yeah, perfect.
Levi still on it?
Yeah.
Is he going to take pictures?
Stay out of John, but I.
He takes pictures.
Stay here, you're a sight.
Well, you want to get sworn in?
No, I'm going to stay in there. I'll get out or we're going to.
No, I can hit you because you're not a policeman yet.
About ninety seconds?
Repeat after me.
All right.
Aye.
You made your name. Patrick Richards.
Do solemnly swear.
Do sw- solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And that I will, to the best of my ability, faithfully perform the duties of police chief.
And I will, to the best of my ability, perform the duties faithfully of police chief.
Of the city of Malin, Oregon.
Of the city of Malin, Oregon.
During my term of office, so help me God.
During my term of office, so help me God. Thank you.
We need a picture of it. You didn't show it to everybody.
They know what it was.
No, they didn't.
Oh, he put the junior badge on there.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you.
So now it's official, you're coming up there?
Yeah, we're a damn house.
Well, you need to sign this to that. Am I supposed to give him this one?
Yeah.
Give this one to me.
They give me the real one.
Don't you have coffee?
Yes, please.
I have a picket up for you. So as long as I don't get pulled over, you know, for this. They're like, what are you doing? I swear to God.
I am a cop, no problem.
Thank you, Levi.
Thank you.
Lineup County Commissioner, tell us some good news or something.
Tell us, tell, good news?
Some, some kind of news. That you're going to take the airport, you're going to pave all our streets.
Jeez. I'm just still heading my airplane, that's great.
I know. No, nothing like that, you know, at the beginning of the year, we had talked about taking some time, which we hadn't done in many, many years, and having some joint meetings with all of the cities. So one here in the city and then inviting you up to the county so that we can just talk about things that are important and knowing what's going on in all five cities, right? A lot of time, the conversation, you hear everybody talking about the city, the city, the city. You have to remind everybody, there's five municipalities in Clamath County and all of them are equally important. So we wanted to take the time to meet with you folks and we learn a lot just sitting in your meetings. Conversations about an airport and, you know, we're taking notes and there's certain phone calls that we can make to be a little helpful. Letters we can write to be helpful and things like that. Things at the county are going extraordinarily well. We're, still have budget issues just like everybody else, but businesses are coming into the county faster than we can keep up with right now. The growth is actually fairly staggering. At a time when the state is declining in population the last two years. Clamath has already exceeded the population estimates that we've had for twenty twenty-five and about to hit twenty thirty. So we're growing faster than we have probably in forty years. And then keeping up, that has its own challenges, right? With housing and infrastructure and, I mean, you name it. Prices going up faster than we would typically like for the people that are already here and making homeownership less and less attainable for young people. So things like that, that we're working on all the time. You may have heard that the F-35 is, has been assigned to Kingsley Field. That is a huge win for us with the F-30, uh, F-15 being decommissioned and working its way out of service over the next, actually, short couple of years. Getting a mission of the F-35 takes care of keeping Kingsley Field, who is our second largest employer in the county, running for the next fifty years.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's a big, big, big win. The economic loss of, of having a base closure would be devastating.
They spend a lot of money in Clamath County.
Oh, man. So, and we're very happy, they've been a tremendous partner. You know, this year, I've been very busy traveling and Commissioner Hensley's been really supportive, making sure that everything is taken care of at home. I'm also the president of the Association of Oregon Counties, which puts me on the road quite a bit trying to advocate for Clamath. And, but make time to come down to Malin.
December twelfth is the one in Clamath, isn't it?
Something like that. I have to look at my calendar every week, I have no idea. By the time I look at it on Monday, it'll be completely different.
I'm pretty sure it's December twelfth.
Perfect, so, I don't know, but.
Did you guys participate in a fight with Moss Adams about the county strategic plan?
No.
None of you did?
First, first of all.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. They were supposed to have one-on-one interviews with all of our municipalities in Clamath County. So if you guys did not get an opportunity to do that, I will look into why that did not occur, but you were on the list to do that, so I apologize for that. But the county is in the process of writing our strategic plan for our future that's heavily influenced by our community and feedback from the community. When we started this endeavor about six months ago, people would ask, well, why, why does the county need a strategic plan? And I would, I would equate it to this. There are many groups in Clamath County doing great work and they're throwing darts at the wall and they're all hitting the wall, but what's our target? And all of us are kind of shooting slightly off, you know, in a different direction. And it's all great work, but where are we going as a county and how are we going to get there? So we're in the process of coming up with the first draft of our strategic plan and it's based on five pillars. That's all based on feedback from people that we believe are, are key partners, the municipalities. So again, I, I don't know why you weren't contacted, so I'll figure that out. It's not too late for some input, so I will get that to you. And then we had about twelve hundred people participate in, in face-to-face forums and surveys. And I initially thought twelve hundred seemed a little light and we've got seventy thousand people in Clamath County. But the company that we're working with told us that they're working with another client that's three times our size and they had fifteen hundred responses and we had twelve hundred. So they were tickled with our responses, but based on those responses, the community has told us they want government to work on five key pillars. Number one's the economy, number two's public safety, number three is housing. Number four was tourism and enhancing tourism and outdoor spaces and things like that. And lastly, they want us to focus on efficient government and I was really pleased with that. Those are the five things that were really important to me when I ran for commissioner and got elected, especially the efficient government piece. We've been laughing and saying many times recently that government ought to run at the. We've been laughing and saying many times recently that government ought to run at the speed of business, not the speed of government.
Yeah.
We get really annoyed by bureaucracy and red tape, so we're, we're really focusing on how do we streamline processes and become much more efficient in government? How do we make sure that we're listening to people and we are doing, we are running the business of government based on the needs and expectations of those we serve, not. Others' agendas, so we're really focused on that moving into the future. So as that strategic plan starts to roll out, we'll make sure that we share it with you, so we get your input and your thoughts and maybe streamline some processes between our two organizations. So again, we're shooting at the same target on the wall, not shooting at different walls in the building, cause I, I feel that government and, uh, Clamath County does that at times. So, um, really happy about the strategic, strategic plan and we're moving forward with that. Again, thanks for allowing us to intrude on your meeting. I think it's really important that we continue to build relationships with each, each other and know who each other is. One of the things I like to say is trust and, and support is not granted, it's earned. So any opportunity, we, we have to sit at the table like this and earn each other's trust, respect and support, we need to take full advantage of that. I think it's really important that you be able to pick up the phone and call me on a moment's notice about anything and we have open and respectful, transparent and professional dialogue about that. So thank you for allowing us to be here and we want to continue to have these meetings with you throughout the years, so we kinda, um. Make sure that we understand each other and we know what each other's doing and we can be supportive of each other. He was taking a bunch of notes about your airport and so was I and, and I leaned over and we were whispering some things that maybe we can do behind the scenes to help you with those projects. So I think that's important and if we don't know, we can't help, so thanks for letting us be here and I look forward to our next meeting with you. And, um, thanks for letting us come to Millin, cause literally there was eight minutes for meeting. That was the closest meeting I've had in a long time, so.
Little longer for me. Is there anything that we can help you with, things, questions that you have for us, anything other than a book club, we'll answer it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna talk about the library today at all.
Actually, actually that fifth pillar was a kind of a great segue into my question.
Sure.
Uh, so about a year ago, we got a, um, Oregon A Street grant, uh, for. Well, our portion would be a hundred and forty-seven thousand. Uh, we have a historic gas station here in, in town, so we've partnered with the, the, uh, nonprofit that owns the building the city has. Uh, to restore it, you know, it's, it's gonna be kinda this photo op, you know, really kinda in, in beautify downtown. Uh, it's kinda the one I saw that we have left in our, in our business district, so, um. So anyways, we thought, hey, this is, we're, you know, we're gonna knock this out, we're gonna knock this out as quick as possible. Uh, and so we've had some contractors come in and the response has been, you know, well, we won't touch this with a ten-foot pole. And we're like, well, why? It's like, well, you know, having to work with the county inspectors is gonna be a nightmare, we're just, we're just, we're not into it. So I don't know, is that an outlier or is that, is that?
Can I go first?
Not just the inspectors though, it was also, you know, building department general. See, what we wanna do is make it a photo op, that's a deal. Preserve the building. It wouldn't be open seven days, but like when we talk to a structural engineer about doing plans and stuff, how do we save this building? Because if I gotta put this, if I gotta send this paperwork into town, we're talking ADA bathroom, he goes, you didn't get no money.
And so we're talking.
It's a tiny building.
Maybe a four hundred square foot building and we're thinking, with our match, it's like two hundred and ten thousand dollar project and, and, yeah, it's just, nope. You know, you didn't, you didn't ask for near enough if, uh, if you're having to go through all these and, and work with, go through the county on this, so.
You can go first.
Well, I gotta go first. I get so annoyed with planning, so this is great for me. Love this conversation. Remember I was talking about streamlining government? So we had a developer come to town and the developer wanted to build, or is going to build, three hundred and sixty houses in Clamath Falls and I was really excited to meet this developer. But the developer had heard all kinds of horror stories about planning and about permits and, um, on and on and on. So we sat down with the developer and had, had, um, our permit department in the room at the same time. And we ironed out what that process was gonna look like, so the developer was happy. Our inspectors were happy, they knew what to expect from each other and we had a plan moving forward, rather than just a bunch of rumors and Clamath County's hard to work with. So when the developer walked out of there, the developer was like, that was awesome, thank you for putting that together. And they know exactly what's going to happen. And I will say that our permits department didn't fudge on any rules. But was understanding of how to, how we can streamline that, how, how we can make that process actually work and what's, what's realistic. Not pie in the sky, all of these add-ons and sprinkler systems and all this other crap. But what did we really need and how were we gonna make this happen? It was a thirty-minute meeting and we were gone. So when you're ready to do that, let's sit down and really buckle down and focus on what that's gonna look like and get, get planning and, and the inspectors on board upfront. I think that's really important. The second piece to that, and I just, I wasn't trying to be rude, I was looking at my phone, trying to find a photo real quick. I have a buddy that, um, refurbishes old gas pumps and things like that and he does a beautiful job, absolutely beautiful. And when he heard about your project, he's offered to do them for free. So when you guys get ready to do that, all we gotta do is call him and he wants to do that project with you and he said that he would make that happen. I was talking with, um, Jeremy Morris, or, and I showed Jeremy the picture and I'm like, this is Steve's work and Steve wants to do those, those, uh, help with this, this little gas station. So anyway, um, let's stay in communication, um, and let's get that knocked out, because I wanna get that done too. And whatever we can do to help get that knocked out, let us know, cause we, that's, that's gonna be a big win and beautiful for Millin. We, we wanna help there as well.
So I was gonna say, a pre-app meeting is exactly the right way to go, so let's just schedule a sit-down. Uh, it's always helpful if grab one of us.
Okay. It's always helpful when one of us is in the room as well, cause stuff will get done. Before you leave the room, stuff will get done.
So, and we'll just iron all that out. Tip, things typically move faster when we do a little shoulder breathing. Well, and we had, I had no problem breathing on somebody's shoulder. You have everybody there in the same room and we just say, look. This is important that it gets done. It's very important to me. And that's all we have to say and then we just sit back and watch.
This is gonna happen.
So just let us be a part of it.
I appreciate it, that's awesome.
Commissioner Minty's coined this term that we've been using lately and it's yes and, not yes but.
Or no but.
Or no but. We're, we're, we're focusing on yes and, let's try these other things too.
You have to do this.
We're going to do this. This is going to happen, so let us know what we can do to help facilitate that process.
I got that down.
And I see the chair is already taking a note, so that's good.
Anything else or questions, questions we can answer from anybody or things that you're working on? You doing any chip sealing this year?
Trying to figure out how to level a street.
Trying to figure out how to level a street, talk to Jerry Vial.
It's just the chips, the crack seal, like we did a few years back.
Yeah.
It's like speed bumps all the way down railroad.
So a year ago or maybe two years ago, we chipped in and helped you get some roads done, is that right?
Yeah, we did the whole now.
Good.
Cause you guys did, yeah, it was wonderful. You guys gave forty-nine thousand, the city gave forty-nine thousand and.
Yeah, because of that.
It was a hundred thousand, so it was enough to do every street in Millin.
Perfect.
Because of that, we felt it was important to help all of the municipalities, so we money mashed all of those to you at the same.
Everybody.
The fifty here was fifty, but then it became fifty in Merrill and fifty in Chiliqui.
Fifty in Bonanza.
Fifty in Bonanza.
Everybody got treated the same. Everybody got treated the same. We get a phone call, every time you do something for one, it, you gotta treat people fair.
Everybody wins.
Everybody wins, so very careful when I volunteer anymore.
I think the, the key takeaway for me is please pick up the phone and call me or, or Commissioner DeGroot or Commissioner Minty if you need us. Um, I feel very passionate about Merrill and Millin, you all know, I just live down the road on Pope Road where our ranch is, so. I feel this deep connection to the two cities and if there's something you need, just let me know and we'll bend over backwards to help you get stuff done for your, for your town, so.
Well, they don't need a police chief anymore.
They don't need a police chief and I wouldn't have volunteered anyway. That ship sailed, that ship sailed. Twenty-eight years of policing was enough for me.
Yeah.
How about the water hauler's deal is?
What's that?
Working on any of that to help this well mitigation stuff?
Have we just talked about that today?
We've worked on that quite a bit today.
Go ahead, Chuck.
So we have received for domestic wells, so we've received, uh, nine million dollars now, uh, to be able to turn around and hand out in grants. So, uh, everybody who has a well that has gone dry is eligible for up to forty thousand dollars to re-drill their well. A big issue really, as we all know, is the availability of drillers. Uh, we've been working on that as well. Uh, we were able to get quite a bit of resources for KCC and they're gonna start training well drillers. So that we can, um, try to beef up that workforce. We, you know, there's a process, you apply, uh, we send somebody out, they inspect the well, make sure that it is in fact in, in need. Uh, and then as soon as you get it, uh, drilled, then we're on board. And I can't remember the match.
So it's forty, up to forty thousand dollars and it's a payback, so if you, if you, um, spend the entire forty thousand dollars, you have to front the money and the grant pays you back. That's challenging for some people, so Pacific Crest Federal Credit Union will do a loan for that forty thousand dollars, up to forty thousand, and then the county will pay back the credit union. If there are people that are struggling with credit issues, we're working with South Central Oregon Economic Development District. For them to do the loans for people that can't necessarily qualify with traditional financing and then we'll pay SCOED back. So we've got some options to make that happen. Even though it's an upfront loan, we have some ways to help you front the money, so.
Yeah, I mean, the bottom line is we're gonna make sure that if you can get a driller out at your place, that you'll be able to have access to that money and, and be able to restore water to your house.
So that's on the website now.
Yep, yep, and we have plenty of money.
We have a lot of money left.
If you know of anyone that, that needs access to that program.
What if they were dry, you know, because this year the ditch is filled up and they actually filled it up earlier this year. So this did.
It helped.
Some of them back.
Oh, man.
Brought mine back.
Yeah, so then all of a sudden now, if you called now, I mean, can you go with, well, last year it was dry.
If you, if you have evidence.
Here and I had this guy out here.
Yes.
And a well guy was out there and they all deemed it was dry and then will that much paperwork work for some of these individuals?
Should.
Yeah, you just need to have proof.
That's all we need.
I get asked a lot.
Yes.
I have a well sounder and stuff like that and people always say, can you run out and measure this for me?
We have a lot of money left.
You wanna, you wanna side gig?
No, I really.
Yeah, we need, we need people to inspect the wells.
We need well, we need inspectors back.
We will, well, we will pay the city of Millin for him to inspect wells in the area.
No, that's not allowed. We've got money to pay for. We've gotta do a pre-inspection and a post-inspection.
I do this area about from Abbot's Point this way.
Hey, if you wanna buffer, if you wanna buffer like five miles outside of Millin, seriously, we will contract you and we will pay you to do the pre and post inspections. It'll take you ten minutes.
Yeah, I know.
And then we'll, the grant will pay the bill, so.
And so if, if that's a way for us to give the city a couple of bucks to borrow your, your guy for a couple of hours.
Yeah, most likely I'm doing it.
That's what, we were talking about that today, the need to try to find somebody to do those inspections, cause that's not easy either.
Yeah, OWRD is not doing it anymore, so the, the burden fell on the county, so we're using that grant fund to pay for people to do that and we're gonna have to contract people. Cause the person we were using is, is not gonna do that any longer for whatever reason. I don't know the issue. There's no drama, but the person's just moved on with their life. So we were talking about contracting today, so, you know, I'll, I'll throw that out there, but I'm serious though, if you or anybody you know wants to, you know, have a buffer around your geographical location here. Um, the county will, will pay those funds.
I've been at Warren Risky's house.
He already got his drilled. We got his done.
Paid his bill a few months ago.
Yes, we did, so.
That was convenient that he was coming down to my shop to get water to all of his house and then like, hey, you have a little deal, let it go.
Any other questions that we can answer or things that we can do to help you? How can we be helpful? Aside a checkbook.
Uh, just make sure you have our numbers on speed dial.
Yeah.
If you need something, let us know. We're always here for you.
If you do wanna do that, uh, just reach out, we'll put you in contact with our grants manager to do those inspections. If, if you have the time and obviously the ability, that would be helpful not just to us, but to everybody in your community.
And back to the airport, I, I don't wanna spend another thirty minutes on that conversation, but seriously, if you wanna use the county's mastic machine. It might be a way to just bridge some drama for you. We've got a mastic machine and I'm sure we could talk to Jeremy Morris about loaning that out to you.
Yeah, maybe I should talk to Jeremy about that one, cause we got a bunch of chip seal rock left down here too, to fill the crack with the chip seal rock.
And if that gets, if that gets you by for a year or two, I mean, didn't nobody be bitching, prime record? Nobody would be upset about the cracks, you know, at least, at least we could fill this in with some mastic.
We got a grinder too for, you know, I'm cutting the cracks up.
We bought a grinder too, so we've got equipment.
You're welcome to use those.
Since it's a city-owned.
We're volunteering Jeremy's equipment, but.
Since it's a city-owned facility, I don't mind volunteering out our equipment, you know.
Jeremy knows me better than you do.
Well, you break it, you bought it.
Robbie can go take a picture real quick and buy a used one someplace we had to trade.
I think we bought.
Man, that herb was rough on that one.
I think we bought Jackson County's, if I remember right, we bought, uh, one of those patch machines.
K through twelve with Jeremy, so I, we can, they can, they know each other real well, so.
And he loves it down here. He wants to be helpful, so. Reach out.
But, you know, that might just be a, a bridge for you to get you.
Might be one of my, my best hires I've had since I've been.
Uh, Jeremy's great.
Do you guys have business cards or?
In my pickup.
Yeah, loads of them.
Can we have one?
Yeah, you betcha. If you want, just write my phone number down, I'll give it to you right now. You ready? Five four one. Oh, I don't care if it's on the record, everybody has it. Six one nine, seven zero zero six. And I just live on Pope Road, so not very far away.
Close to you? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you coming down.
Not at all. We'll go to the water hole and have a beer now.
Singing the same, or Begonies, it's probably closed though, isn't it?
Get that closed on Tuesday, Doc.
No, they're open Tuesday. They switch at seven hours, it's up to Tuesday.
I told my wife we weren't gonna get done till nine, so I could probably.
We'll get, uh, some of them. Robbie, he's, he's in charge of the service club, uh, on that gas station project and, yeah, that'd be great if we could, uh, yeah. Set, like I said, get rid of some of that, uh, red tape, maybe, like I said, give a little, give a little.
We can give it a little.
Little nudge.
Little.
Shake the tree, you bet.
Yeah.
Let's make some stuff happen.
That's a, those things are, and when you run into issues like that, ever, if you're having a problem with a county department and it feels bureaucratic and red tape and those types of things.
Tell us.
We should be your first call, cause it's just, that BS doesn't fly.
There's no need.
Especially with a municipal partner, right?
There's, there's a, there's a new gear in government, we're shifting, I'm telling you. We gotta get some stuff done.
Well, dealing with the county, but then the state was involved too on the water hauling, cause they dealt with.
OWRD was, yeah.
Yeah, Ronda was.
NICEF.
DHS.
Yeah.
And then the state had some paperwork, sign this and sign that.
Oh, it was a whole thing?
Yeah, but I know, but we're selling water for five dollars a thousand. And I told Rhonda, I said, you wasted two and a half hours of my time. You know what my wages are? You're even gonna take that much water?
Yeah.
That red tape to me.
Yes, it is.
It's like, yeah, Millin's honor system.
Oh, don't, don't get me started with state.
Yeah.
Commissioners, I got a question.
Yeah.
Um, as a teacher here at the, at Lost River. Um, we have a lot of students who do a lot of good stuff and, you know, they're successful in what they do, whether it's a club, a sport or anything. What's one way the county commissioners could showcase, help us showcase these students?
Wow, that's a great.
That's a, that's an amazing question. Um, are you talking about for them or showcase them back to the community? Tell me what you mean, I mean.
Showcase them back to the.
To the community.
You know, we're welcome to, when there's things like that, let us know, we can invite, um, the. Whether it's a team or an individual or whatever it is, uh, to a business meeting and we can present them, you know, recognize them, present them with something, some kind of. Resol-, well, it wouldn't really be a resolution, but proclamation maybe of some kind.
We did that letter for that, that girl that was graduating the other day, so we could, we could write letters about, you know, this is wonderful and frame it. We could do that on TV, so we can showcase people, um, that way.
Yeah, just thinking of ways to, you know, cause out here, well, you know, we're kinda out.
Yeah, celebrating kids, you're talking to the right two guys. I mean, both have kind of a heart for that, so you just, you know, and if you have ideas, we need to come down. Well, shoot, you live around the corner, but, um.
Yeah, or like maybe at one of your public meetings.
Yeah.
That, you know, probably be a summer thing, cause unless we can get the time during the school year, but.
We'll make a great big deal out of it.
Is with the kids and like, they, like I said, they do a lot of good stuff and sometimes they don't maybe get the recognition that I think they.
I totally agree.
They deserve and especially when we're trying to get kids to stay.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, go to OIT, go to KCC, as, as opposed to leaving the area.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, wanting to stay here.
Now, your kids at Lost River are amazing. Just sidebar, I drove a potato truck two days a week. For the Troutman family on Sunday and Monday, just something to do, helping the Troutmans out. I, they're good family and. They money matched my wages for that, that uh, season and we donated it all to Lost River FFA. So that was really, that was kind of fun. I think we're gonna do it again this year.
Well, maybe one of these days it'll be FPLA.
Yeah. Benji, Benji said the same thing.
We're a softball team.
Yeah, softball team.
We're the historical society.
I don't know that we'll do FFA again, but um, we'll definitely do something to give it back to the kids in this area. That, that was a lot of fun last year.
And like, you know, Rob, Rob, there's a lot of kids that do, like I said, a lot of things and, you know, one thing I say at our school is. FFA is huge and it's a good thing, you know, and a lot of everybody else kind of flies under the radar of FFA, but. You know, that doesn't negate what these kids are capable of doing.
Totally agree.
And one of the things that, one of my messages to the kids is, you know, even if you are a farm owner, well, guess what you are, you're a business.
Right, no kidding.
Right, no question.
Right.
And so I'm just thinking of ways that maybe, you know, get some help from the county as far as how we can.
I think that's great. You know, are you going to Atlanta?
I am.
Good, good.
Gotta raise, raise the money, but we're trying. But yeah, that's the, that's the plan. So I think this year we're taking. Uh, twelve or thirteen, I had some kids that had to drop out because of the, the costs and stuff and some other stuff, but still a good sized group for.
Good.
For our school.
Love it. Have fun. Anytime you think that there's people that, you know, kids that need to be recognized, let me know and we'll bring them up on a Tuesday after. We don't do it Tuesday morning now, we do it Tuesday afternoon. Uh, we moved it to one o'clock in the afternoon. It made it a little bit easier for a lot of folks.
Yeah. And that's just a matter of getting ahold of.
Sandy.
She's still there?
Oh, man. You get a cell, hold to Sandy or Haley and let them know. And I mean, there's a good chance that the paper takes their picture and it makes that and of course, it'll be streamed and it'll be televised and all those types of things. So we're happy to do that for kids, always.
Sounds good. Thank you.
You bet.
Our wives are both teachers, man.
Oh, he knows.
Anything else? All right.
Thank you for coming down.
You bet.
You bet. I think we'll probably exit.
Yeah. Unless you need anything else or need us to stick around for anything.
Or do you wanna, Mayor, if you don't mind, do you want to talk about the ballot box while we're still here? It's down your agenda, it's uh.
I have to make a motion to move new business D to now.
Yeah, Mayor, I'll make a motion to move uh, item eight D to now.
Do you have a second? You're supposed to wait till the mayor asks. All in favor, say aye. Approve. Motion passes. Did everyone, did you get this? I don't know if you got it. They want to put a ballot box out someplace. And best place would be out here someplace more secure.
Perfect.
And you guys will do lighting and camera, is what we understood, right?
Yep. Make sure it's secure. It is the best way.
Well, now a lot of people have to go to Klamath, um, some elections.
Yep.
Last election, we didn't have a box in here, did we?
No.
No.
So I think some people didn't vote just because of that.
Right, and we want to make it easy. Um, and those secure ballot boxes, I mean, they've been tried to break into and it. I mean, you really need a torch and you're gonna burn up the ballots, so.
Well, right here it'd be perfect, cause the police department's here too. So what do we have to do to?
Just work with Rochelle, the clerk, and she will take care of everything. Just say, yes, we have a location for you. Uh, she'll work on the license agreement. Uh, here's a sample of the license agreement. You got it? Okay.
Think, we just need your blessing.
Yeah, and she'll take care of everything.
We have a blessing. So we'll get ahold of her, Alberto can get ahold of her.
Thank you. We really appreciate that.
Well, it helps our citizens.
And you can use it for any elections that you have that aren't county elections. So if you wanted to be able to use it on some kind of off thing where you're doing something with, just locally here, totally fine too. All right?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, the county's going to adjourn our meeting at eight forty-five.